This special meeting of the Belvedere City Council. City Clerk, may we have the roll call and announcement, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Kimmenser here. Vice Mayor Mark. Mayor Lynch.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Wilkinson is absent this evening. If you're a member of the public and have joined today's meeting remotely from a PC, Mac, iPad, or Android device, your audio will be on mute and your video will be turned off. Should you wish to speak when the chair opens, public comment, and are using Zoom meeting platform, please use the raise hand function. At the appropriate time, we will unmute your audio and inform you that it is your opportunity to comment. If you've called into the meeting and wish to comment, please press star nine. When I'm mute, please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your comments. Please note, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Mayor, councilmembers, written comment was received for this meeting distributed to council and comments are available on the website. This concludes my announcements.
Mayor Lynch and Letitia, I just want to point out, point of order that we do have to close out the special meeting, closed session meeting prior to starting this one. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. We went into closed session. We completed it. Advice was given and there's nothing to report. And that concludes the closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the third item on the agenda. Well, Robert, do you want to introduce the members of the City Hall team that are here in council?
Sure. Hang on one second. So Mayor Lynch, this evening, we have Irene Borba, Director of Building and Planning, Sammy Malakman, Associate Planner. We have Ann Danforth and Andrew Shen, who are the city's legal representatives, myself, Robert Zadnik, the city manager. And we also have EMC Group, who is our principal planner and consultant for this project, Andy Flower here tonight. Andy, I'll let you go ahead and introduce your staff briefly.
It is just me this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Third item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone wishing to join, may I stand? All right, let's turn to our item four, our continued public hearing forays, the discussion and possible adoption of Resolution Number 202304, finding that the 2023 to 2031 sixth cycle housing element update is exempt from CEQA and approving the adoption of the 2023-2031 sixth cycle housing element update and the safety element. Irene, can we ask you for the staff report or to introduce Andy, who will handle, I guess?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lynch and members of the council. Tonight, Andy Flower, Principal Planner for EMC Planning Group, will be presenting to the council. He'll be providing you information from the last time that the council heard this item, which was on January 9th. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Andy so he can provide you the information.
Thank you, Irene. Yes, this evening, we can go through and look at the edits that have been recommended through our subcommittee. Irene, did you want to talk a little bit about the subcommittee that we've met with since the last council meeting?
Sure, sure, Andy, thank you for that. The subcommittee, Vice Mayor Mark and Councilmember Cooper have met a couple of times with staff and the consultants to go through a number of comments that have been provided. They have gone through the document themselves and provided some additional information and changes to the document. At this point, I believe those changes have been made to the document or will be made by the end of tonight for hopefully adoption by the council and then forwarding on to HCD. As part of the presentation tonight, Andy is going to go through those changes so that the council, as well as the public, are familiar and aware of what those changes have been.
And Andy, the changes are marked in the document in three different colors, right? So I don't think we need to go through. I'm hoping you're not intending to go through the edits. I would think you could do it just by category and do it quite briefly so we can get to the discussion. Thank you.
Absolutely. The assumption is, yes, that you have read and are aware of those three different colors of changes. There has been a shortlist of requested changes since then. So I'll share my screen and present what those are. And if the council would like, I can go into more depth about each of those. So in addition to those three different colored changes that we saw in the draft that was made available, this was the shortlist of requested edits that came out of that subcommittee meeting. As you can see, it's four different sections of the document. We have Chapter Four, Appendix C, and Appendix D. So I'm happy to either go through those item by item or leave this on the the screen for people to view, to see if there are questions for me to go in deeper.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it is part, that list, that page is part of the record, Andy. So I think if folks
It's part of the memo.
Right, have questions about that, we can do that. But I don't think it's necessary to go through them line by line just now.
Great.
I do have a question about those, one of those in particular, Andy, which was, if that's okay at this time.
Absolutely.
On page 46, Table 44, your comment is that this table is about available density, not a cross check with inventory. Certainly, the second part of our comment on that one was to add an additional column, the actual allocated in the inventory.
Thank you for that reminder.
Just so that, because that was
That's right. I do recall that now. Thank you, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. And I do want to note that the staff report dated January 20, I think, is quite comprehensive. It does identify the source of the various edits, proposed revisions to the inventory table and the edits that Andy just identified. I want to thank Robert and Irene for putting that together. At this time, let me ask if any of my fellow council members have questions about the, for Andy or Irene about the edits with the document that we're looking to consider approving tonight.
I have a question just about timing and process. And I'll defer to other questions in a second. Andy, the in the published document, there's the edits and then there's a clean version at the end. But the clean version only incorporates the red and the blue comments, not the green comments. I understand where, because of that. Those green comments being integrated, and if there are additional comments or corrections tonight, can you talk a little bit about when a clean draft would be available to be able to submit or reviewed by yourself and/or city staff? You're muted, Andy.
Thank you for that question. I can tell you that all of the green comments have now been incorporated, except for one, that is asking us to include information about projected rentals versus owner properties into the future. And we decided to omit that one short paragraph. And I'm happy to bring that up on screen if you would like. But outside of that, the green, the green text has been integrated in with what will be published by midnight tonight, along with any changes that the council might request during this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper, do you have questions for Andy or Irene at this time?
Did you want us to ask questions on what Andy presented so far or anything in addition?
I think it would be helpful at this stage to ask questions that you may have relating to explanations of edits that you may not understand. For example, I have some questions that I want to understand better, comments that I want to understand better. And once I understand them better, I may have revisions or I may not. But I think those are the kinds, I've got about four or five of those. And those are the kinds of questions that I would propose. We direct to Andy and Irene right now. And then after public comment, we can come back and identify specific edits that council members may have.
Okay, I don't have any additional questions beyond some, something later on, based on what you just said, Jim.
Thank you. Councilmember Kimmenser?
This is just a question that needs some clarification, Andy. And thank you very much for this document. I was wondering if there's an inconsistency in the census data in the housing element and the safety element. Is there going to be a time in the future to correct that? I noticed that sometimes it uses the 2015 to 2019 data. And then at one point, it used the 2020 data. I was assuming when I read that 2015 through 2019 data was used, that the 2020 data was not available. And so I was just wondering about that. It doesn't really affect whether I would, what my vote would be tonight. But I was just wondering, as a term of process, whether that kind of, whether that would be possible to correct that at some later date. The one of the inconsistencies was on page B six of the housing element and referenced 2015, 2019 data. And I believe a reference in the safety element was 2020. And really, it just requires an explanation. Hi, you're unmuted, Andy.
Could you speak to the subject matter of that data specifically?
They were referring to, one was in the race and ethnicity section, and the other was with respect to the, I believe it was the evacuation plan. But my, I'm not so much quibbling with the text as whether there is an opportunity to correct it, perhaps during a period of time when we're responding to comments or something like that.
Well, I guess it depends if this evening's action is to adopt or to approve. You can certainly always change your general plan, but I don't think you would want to have that effort to update data that helps us come to our conclusions and our recommendations and our policies. It is a snapshot and it's true that some of our data is coming from different sources because some were available while others weren't.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mark?
Thanks, Andy, Irene. Andy, I've got about three or four small, little correction edits as we go through, which I presume I can list and I'll take notes from additional comments if they take it and get them to you as, you know, the few little things. Nothing that I have are terribly substantive. I just wanted to confirm a couple of things as I did this. But is that acceptable to get you a few little things that we could still get into this next draft? Like I said, it's not significant. I have about six small corrections. I can go through them now, but I think it's better if I get you them all afterward.
The only issue with that is there would be no time for, for questions or for confirmation that I understand.
Okay, well, let me, then let me just, like I said, there's very few. Do you have a document in front of you?
I do. I have, so can, what's helpful is if you could group the comments by section. And I could possibly even just make them in real time so that we can all agree.
I'll just go in order. Page two, 18.
Okay.
Program three, 10.
I'm going to share my screen.
Sure. Program three, 10 on two, 18, go so slide up a bit. The, the second to last pair, sentence paragraph, the city will develop. I would change it to has and will maintain an SB 35 checklist, because I believe that's already been done. So has and will maintain A. Just make that A, not Ann. Yeah, perfect. On page two, 20. Similar, three, 14. Likewise, the city has amended, as opposed to will amend, its municipal code with the adoption of AB 897. You could just say with the adoption of AB 897 to provide.
Did you say AB?
With the adoption of AB 897. And Irene, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you just literally did that. Okay.
Commissioner Mark, or Chair Mark, Vice Chair Mark, rather. That has gone to the Planning Commission, but it hasn't gone to the City Council.
Okay. I think it's powerful to say that we've done that or are in the process of doing that, as opposed to, because, because a lot of this is will, we will stuff, which I think the, you and our attorney has appropriately said, whenever we can, we should show this progress. And in fact, since it's been approved by the Planning Commission and brought to the City Council, I think it should reflect that, if possible, in process, perhaps. The city is in the process of amending its municipal code with the adoption of AB 897. Yeah. There you go. Thank you, Nick. At the top of page four, six.
I do want to show you that I just did.
Perfect. And well, above that, it's, at the bottom of the last page, there's a paragraph. Well, that's different, right? I guess it's addresses for future, that's addresses for future ADU locations. There's a sentence in there in order to be conservative. That one there. In order to be conservative, I just want to make sure that those numbers are correct. Thirty, is it thirty or is it twenty-eight? What number are you using for that? Below that, how many ADUs are we using?
I'm going to double check.
Thirty? I see thirty there.
Thirty.
Okay. We talked about a little less, just for a round number, but that's, that's fine. Okay. Four, five, just at the bottom of point four, five, the bottom of page four, six. Just make sure that that number, sixty-four, additional thirty-two units. Good. And that thirty-two is correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, because it was, okay, just double checking that. So you took out the paragraph on four, seven, right? The one about future rental?
Correct.
That's when you didn't like. For the rest of the City Council, that was a statement in a paragraph that basically said, with the adoption of this allocation, the proposed housing would increase the city's rental capacity from X to Y. And I guess you don't feel comfortable with that statement.
We, we don't have any power over rental versus ownership for, for sites. It's something that you could encourage if, but I, I don't, I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. It was, it was a narrative point and if you can support it, that's okay. No worries.
I did want to share with you, we do have a new image in in this section. Yes, right here.
Okay. Yeah, correcting those numbers. All right, that's, that's, that's the extent of my, like I said, small comments in the element itself. I do have two quick comments in the safety element. One is just on the one, eighteen, the slope stability and landslide hazard map, just whether you had checked the accuracy of that.
Yes.
And the red were seemingly the same thing.
We have corrected that.
Okay. Could you bring it up?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm just, just one moment.
The discussion there was that the yellow and the red, if you read the actual text of what it's defining, they didn't seem to be any different. They just say the same words differently. High landslide susceptibility and high susceptibility to landslide. So we were asking for that clarification.
I apologize, I'm not able to get my
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we talked about it and I'm comfortable with, with your statement that you've looked at it and corrected it. On one, thirty, on page one, thirty. And there's, there's, there's two discussions of, this is evacuation in the safety elements. There's two, two statements, therefore maximum eighteen hundred vehicles could evacuate the city within thirty minutes. And therefore, this evacuation is consistent with AB 747 requirements. Both of those statements, I think, need some clarification. And we talked about that a little bit in our discussions, that the Hexagon study makes it clear that it's, it's sort of an anticipated, all things working well type evacuation. And this, this one, two, three, the third paragraph on page one, thirty talks about the specific roadways, specifically Beach Road and Centerfold Avenue, the city would use to evacuate all the residents within this half hour. Makes no discussion whatsoever about the vulnerability of these roadways themselves. And if these, if these roadways were not, not available for this, for this evacuation, the same statistics and the same evacuation discussions are no longer valid. I think we need something like that.
And I apologize, I said that my team isn't here. My, my extended team is here. Shekha John from Hexagon is available here also for comment. And I can bring up those documents if you'd like to begin addressing the comment.
It's really, it's really, it's really that third paragraph on page one, thirty of the house, of the safety element.
Okay, I can bring that up.
We talked quite a bit in the pages preceding that, I mean, effectively and, and as it's supposed to, about the vulnerability of these roads, the area in particular, but these roadways as well. And then to make that statement that evacuation over these two roads within a half hour and therefore is consistent with AB 747, it seems insufficient. I think, I think there needs to be some clarification that in fact would only be capable of evacuation in that hour, half hour, if in fact there was proper notice and if in fact the roads were passable as described in the text. Because there's a high likelihood that they may not be. When you read, when you read paragraph two and paragraph three, it places quite, quite an assumption on these two roads having this maximum capability. But you spent the previous eight or 10 pages talking about the vulnerability of those very roads. So that's the disconnect that I'm referring to. I don't have direct specific language. And I'm not suggesting we necessarily need to change it for this draft. We can change it the next draft and discuss it further, if that's what you'd recommend. But that's, that's an inconsistency that I'd rather be clear about and straightforward in this part of the document, which is a clear description of risks and constraints to the, to the, to the development, potential development. That make sense?
So, so the solution then, would you like to see more of the language that Shekha brought into the most current memo? More contextual understanding of where this is, how this assessment is derived? What the assumptions are?
Well, I, and well, I'm, I'm, let me ask you. I don't mind, I wanted to, I wanted to get on the record, but I don't mind that we review this for a subsequent. I mean, I mean, we didn't spend a lot of time on the safety element because of the, of the tight timetable. But this was one of the ones that, one of the sections that a few council members did discuss. And as I looked through it, those two paragraphs really did seem to be insufficient relative to the previous discussions of the, of the, of the risks that, in a sense, aren't mitigatable. And evacuation is potentially not as, as it's described in this. Do you see a problem in submitting this, but then reviewing it and modifying this with an additional paragraph, perhaps in a subsequent revision or subsequent submittal to HCD?
I do want to be clear that the safety element is submitted to OPR and it is not on the same timeline as what we have with HCD.
Oh. So this wouldn't be submitted by the end of the month?
Correct. It does, it does not, it does not have the same kind of timeline and consequence.
Oh, okay. So then, so then, then let's, let's, let's focus on the elements. And let's, let's, Andy, maybe you and I readdress this at a separate time. I wasn't aware of that. So I think that, that, that solves that problem for now. Thank you.
Mary Lynn, if I may. Could I have a point of clarification? Because my comment earlier with regard to certain inconsistencies did also pertain to the safety element. And I was under the misconception perhaps that there was a single motion this evening that was going to be to adopt or not adopt both the housing element and the safety element tonight. Are those two separate, are those to be two separate resolutions? And what would the effect of adopting the housing, but wait for some revisions to the safety element be? Is the housing element dependent upon adoption of the concurrent safety element or not?
The draft resolution before the council tonight would both find the project exempt and adopt both the housing element update and the safety element update. That's a matter of convenience because they're That's a matter of convenience because they're typically both done at the same time. The council could certainly break those two different issues up into two resolutions. The timing issue is a bit uncertain. The housing element law says that upon adoption of the housing element update, the local agency shall update the safety element basically as appropriate to reflect the development contemplated by the housing element update. Does upon adoption mean contemporaneous? It doesn't say.
I see.
I would say if not, if you're not doing both tonight, the housing element needs to be done as soon, I mean, the safety element needs to be done as soon as possible thereafter. And again, ideally cities do them at the same time.
I see, but HCD would not look unfavorably toward our actions this evening if we did not concurrently adopt the safety element, or is it? Is it considered a plus to do the both?
I would say it's more normal to adopt them both, but as to HCD reactions, I defer to Mr. Flowers. He's more likely to have experience with that than I.
Thank you. Andy?
In, in my discussion with HCD representatives, it was not a significant matter of consequence. Of course, it's important that they are consistent, but as far as timing, it, it doesn't have to be simultaneous.
Okay.
Does, does, is this, is the safety element get comments and subject to review and, and revision, or is that not your experience?
I'll, I'll be honest, I, I this is my first round of working with safety elements. But I can, I can take that question back to my team who has a lot more experience with safety melon elements specifically.
Okay, I'm, I'm, Marilyn, I'm comfortable leaving the, leaving the resolution as it is to adopt and if there's an opportunity to revise, do it, do that at that point. For that comment.
Thank you.
If I may, I have another map.
I have one.
That was altered. Sorry.
If, if we are going to adopt them to the hazard map that Peter Mark just referred to on page one dash eighteen, then has a typo. Apart from the ambiguity and landslide susceptibility, I do think we should actually change in real time. We don't have a West Side Drive here in Belvedere, it's West Shore Road.
That, yes, I, I did that, bring that to our, our graphics team to their attention. Thank you.
Would that be changed in real time tonight for purposes of adoption or not? We're trying to get a, uh, we're trying to get a draft that we can actually vote on one way or another this evening?
Certainly, I will, I will check again. My understanding was that he completed it. It just doesn't appear to be in the file that I thought I could locate it. So I, I will search that. I, I do have a map that relates to that, that relates to housing element with the safety element. May I, may I share that?
Please.
Peter, I think together, I think you commented on this map when we met in subcommittee, so I wanted to share that it has been updated and corrected. Correlates the, that housing element, the, um, the sites inventory with incidents of high risk for hazard sites or for hazards rather, along with the single egress roads.
Okay, thank you.
And, and this can be found at the end of appendix D.
Thank you, Councilmember Kipitser. Did you have more, more questions?
No, and thank you for coming back to me.
Of course.
I appreciate that.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Did, did we want to ask? And do you want to ask Andy about that item in the resolution? The, the, the resolution that we would be asked to adopt to on the, on the third page. The whereas based on the letter received by the Belvedere Land Company. I'm wondering whether that to accommodate the lower income Rena, I don't understand that portion of that that paragraph. I understand existing uses are likely to be discontinued during the planning period. But to accommodate lower income Rena, I don't understand that portion of that paragraph. Andy, did you have any input into the resolution itself?
No, I did not.
Irene, do you have a, a comment on that? Do you know, you see where I'm looking?
Yes, I do. And actually, I thought, Andy, that was the one whereas that you requested that we add to the resolution.
Oh. Am I just not remembering? I am. I don't, I don't recall that. I'm sorry, Irene, but I'm, I see the value in including it. It may have been advice that was shared through the collaborative that I moved forward.
What does the lower income Rena have to do with existing uses though? I'll, I'll read the, um, whereas based on a letter received by the Belvedere Land Company, the existing uses on the sites identified in the site inventory to accommodate the lower income Rena are likely to be discontinued during the planning period and therefore do not constitute an impediment to the additional resident residential development during the period covered by the housing element. I understand the existing uses, whatever they may be. But when you specifically modify it to accommodate lower income Rena, I don't understand how that's, that works in this paragraph. Because we're not really relating it to existing uses relative to incomes, are we?
I, I don't know that we need to specify lower income. I would think that this whereas would stand alone if it were just to cite Rena generally.
Yeah. So if we were to say, based on a letter received by the Belvedere Land Company, the existing uses on the sites identified in the site inventory are likely to be discontinued during the planning period and therefore do not constitute an impediment to additional residential development during the period covered by the housing element. I think if we were to strike to accommodate lower income Rena, that just doesn't make sense to me. Because the, the point is that you're making a point about existing uses and that those existing use, uses are likely to be modified or discontinued during the development planning process. That's not in, that's not a impediment to this development. That's your point, right? But there's other uses and many uses that I don't know why it's calling out lower income Rena in particular.
I, I agree. I think that if it, if it called out Rena more generally, I think it would be a lot more impactful and direct in its language.
So Anne, are you comfortable taking out those one, two, three, four, five, six, six words?
Would recommend taking out the words. Okay, to accommodate, I'm sorry.
To accommodate the lower income Rena.
To accommodate lowering her arena. I would just take out the, I would just take out lower income and say the arena.
Okay.
We'll just make a note of that and we can come back to it during the discussion, a portion of this evening and see if we can get consent from the council members on that.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Mark, any other questions for Andy or Irene at this time?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Andy, I had just a, a couple relating to there, there are revisions that I just didn't understand. In the housing element document itself, page two point five at the bottom. This is policy H three point six. And it says require the provision of ADUs in the development of new single family homes. And I don't know what it, I don't know what it means to say require the provision. Does that mean require them to be allowed? On page two point five, two dash five.
Sorry, my computer's a little slow to catch up. And I'm also being a little slow to catch up with Peter's request for the map. I do have that ready when we're done with this. So I'm sorry, which program is it? Two dash?
Five. It's page two, that, page two dash five?
The page may not correlate because I'm toggling back between showing all changes and not.
It's policy H three, three point six.
Okay, there is a program that also relates to that and that might help help it make more sense.
Yeah, so it's H three point six. It says in the first line there in the black text or the unbolded text, require the provision of ADUs and it goes on in the development of new single family homes. What does it mean to say require the provision? Does that mean require that an applicant be, be allowed to build an ADU?
No, it would be required. If someone were to build a, a single family unit, then an ADU would be required. And, and we have seen with the recent planning applications that this is, this has become a regular occurrence. So it's not side up, not outside of the trends that we're seeing. If they did not want to build an ADU, they could instead pay a fee in lieu. And, and that income generated would help pay for some of the incentives that we've included with this plan.
Thank you. That's helpful. I had a question about page three dash ten and it echoes a, a comment from Councilmember Kipitser. In in, in the, the middle paragraph on that page, we, we refer to census data from twenty ten. And another part of the document, we refer to census data from twenty twenty. And so I don't know if that is a typo or I guess I'm just confused about why we are not consistently using one data set for the census over the other.
The census data for twenty twenty was problematic for several reasons, one of them being COVID. Others, then for other reasons additionally. So there's some data that's less, less useful or, or trust worthy. So we relied on our experts to guide us in understanding when it was more appropriate to use which underlying data.
Excellent. Thank you. That makes sense. My next question's on page four dash four.
Okay. Again, the page numbers might have moved around a little. Does this look familiar?
This is, uh, it's preceding figure four dash one. So let's see, it's this, it's for, it's section four dot four arena strategy.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. So at the top of page four dot four, last sentence, it says, recent state laws greatly expand opportunities of right housing unit development. Are you referring to opportu- opportunities of right? That, that last clause doesn't read correctly to me.
Thank you for this catch. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sweet by right.
Right, okay. And then if you go down to the third bullet point, it just ends with eligible. And I wonder, are we missing something there? Because I didn't understand really how that, what, what that sentence means.
I would think that would be for eligible applications or eligible projects.
That's what it reads. That's what it's implied. But yeah, okay, good. And then in this document, the last question I had is, is the last section of chapter four. It's the second to last paragraph.
That's the one we took out, I believe.
Oh, this one's out.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. And then and then on the appendix D, Andy?
Yes.
Where we talk about site four B. San Rafael Avenue. Mallard Road.
Forgive the scroll here.
Yeah, Mallard Road, so. In the first paragraph, we've, we refer to forty-eight units total. And then in, at the last line of the second paragraph, we refer to a total of fifty-two units.
I might invite. Oh, I'm sorry.
And my question to you is, should those numbers be consistent? That is, should they both be either forty-eight or fifty-two?
I might invite Vice Mayor Mark to
Yeah, no, it, it should be forty-eight. Because the determination is the the net allocation of we've always tried to look at without specific survey information. We've always tried to look at what is the approximate net acreage and the applicable number of units. And we're making the determination that it's forty-eight units and we're going with the, the allocated density by general plan of forty-eight units up top. And it should be forty-eight units there too, wouldn't you, wouldn't you say, Andy?
That it should be forty-eight units down below here?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Andy. That was all the questions that I had.
Did you have a question about the, um, the language related to the general plan?
I, I do. I thought we would come to that during the discussion section, I think. Are there any other questions that? Councilmember Cooper?
I, I'm sorry, I actually do have a question. And I didn't want to jump in, but it was back at H three point six. Also a policy. And really, I, I'm not sure you even have to get there. What it says is that we can create the ADUs for the purposes of providing affordable housing to local public and private employees, medical assistance, first responders, et cetera. There's a list of people that could use the the ADUs. And my question is, are, is it legal to actually designate how units, who legal, how, to whom units would be rented? Or, I mean, how is it that we're able to list specific groups? Is that legal?
That's a great question. I, I think this would be a good candidate for revision and I'd like to welcome Anne's comments for this too. I would think at minimum, we should maybe say et cetera to, to imply that this is just a suggested list or else take out all of all of the item, itemized employment types.
I, I'd be inclined to take that out. I had the same reaction. And it just, I, I don't know if it's legal or not, but it seems finite and somewhat exclusive.
Thank you for that catch. It was not our intention. Thank you.
And actually, this is just a typo thing on policy H three point four, it says right in the middle, it says develop a local real estate tax credits. But I think a local real estate tax credit. So we delete the S there.
And I think that was a copy paste here. Yeah, thank you.
One or the other there. I, I wonder if on the it's table A, which is extremely far down almost to the end of the entire document after comments and everything, 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 which is your housing element sites inventory. And I know we talked about this and maybe it's changed and I just wanted to make sure that it's noted that twelve crest as an R fifteen zone should be three and not six. I, I'm not, I don't know. Perhaps you changed that and I missed it. So I apologize if that happened. That's in that big rectangular spreadsheet thing.
Thank you, yes. Thank you. Yes, that's our HCD inventory list, and thank you for that.
Just that one on the bottom about Crest Road.
Okay.
There was that one. And I think that's all I had, other than what you're suggesting we'll discuss during.
Terrific. So any other questions of, of Andy or staff at this time?
The, uh, comments have raised two, uh, issues in my mind. Very quickly was, um, the twenty eight, the forty eight unit bringing the, um, consistency with regard to the Mallard Road, uh, property. Councilmember Mark was bringing that to forty eight. Was that in response to Mr. Wolf's, um, letter? Or, uh, other data that is available to the city?
The, the comment that I made was in response to Mr. Wolf's letter.
Sorry, I should have asked you. Okay, just, just, uh, asking where that came from. So we have some data from that. And because the whereas the recitals in the resolution seemed to me to be the basis for our action tonight, I did have one more question about the, um, for clarification, uh, Andy or council. What letter are, is being referred to? So if the council is reciting that our actions based on certain evidence or documents or statements, I just wanted to make sure that we knew where we had seen that. I have only seen one letter in the materials. It's at the very end of appendix D. It's D five. It's D five, um, exhibit letter for non vacant site redevelopment is that, um, the letter that is being referred to in that recital?
Yes.
Okay, if it is, um, I just wonder, um, but correct me if, if you think we're wrong, whether they, um, that where that recital forth from the end might change the word discontinued to simply, uh, to, to replace the word discontinued with the phrase available for redevelopment. I, I just found that that paragraph was confusing. And whether that language might be preferable or whether there's some reason that discontinued is is the interpretation of that letter.
Excuse me, um, Ms. Flowers, I think the, the question might be, is there something in HCD regulations or the housing law that makes that type of language necessary when this site is not vacant?
Oh, for discontinued use? Is that?
It says it's like arena are likely to be discontinued. And I think that's really perhaps what we're having some problem with the understanding this language. If we're relying on the letter of August eighteenth, twenty twenty two, it seems like what they're, what they're trying to say is, um, that some of those, um, sites identified in the site into inventory to accommodate the arena. So we've stricken lower income, so accommodate the arena are likely to be available for redevelopment. It, it seems to me that's more what, um, HCD and the intent of the legislation might be going for rather than the, the rather ambiguous and negative. Or discontinued doesn't really give HCD the confidence, um, in our intention to really, um, implement the policies.
Yeah.
I, I think we all agree that, that term is, is a better term to use redevelopment. That's more appropriate.
Okay, for the, for the resolution then, um, council. I'll make that note. That, that's all. Thank you very much for.
Thank, thank you. I think you, I think you finally ran to ground the concerns that both council member Cooper and I had about that language. All right, so we will, um, uh, open this item up for public comments. Uh, is there anyone here who would like to address this agenda item? Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Oh, it's on the Pat Carapiett. I live at Four Lagoon Road. And I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude. And I think the gratitude of every citizen in this city that the city council and specifically Vice Mayor Mark and Councilmember Cooper for the time and energy and thoughtful, uh, revision to this housing element that, um, we're lucky to have them in our community and willing to volunteer. And that I feel, um, citizens should understand that this council has the highest priority for our citizens and should be very thankful for everyone who sits on the council and for everything they do for us. I specifically am very thankful for everyone that serves. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone else here at tonight who wishes to address this agenda item? I don't see anyone. Um, can I ask the clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, looking over at the attendees with sixteen attendees, I see one raised hand.
Thank you. Please, uh, bring them in.
I'm gonna go over and unmister William Rothman.
Yes. Well, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Uh, I also want to thank you for your, your very hard work on this, but I was troubled by something that I heard. And I want to know whether it could possibly be true that Belvedere's plan in, in, involves requiring people to build an ADU anytime they build a house or to pay into a fund. Now, it, it, if, if someone, please tell whether that's true or not. I, I can't imagine such a thing. Because obviously, someone would simply build a smaller house, add on to it and say, and here's the ADU and never rent it out, but just make a bigger house. I, I can't believe you would require people to actually build an ADU. Could, could you please say whether that's really what you plan to do?
Thank, thank you, Bill. I'm gonna ask, uh, Vice Mayor Mark to address that, please.
Yeah, thank you for that question, um, Dr. Rothman. I think we are trying to communicate to HCD that we are focusing on policies and procedures that support additional housing in our community. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, that ultimately the devil is going to be in the details as far as how we do that, how we incorporate these inclusionary, um, housing policies, um, what type of exemptions exist? What type of, um, requirements, um, are they? And, and if in fact, if there are in lieu fees, what, what they may be and, and, and who would qualify for that? So we're not committing to a specific policy, an absolute requirement, um, and having an in lieu fee. We're, we're, we're committing to, um, I guess the commitment to, to motivate additional housing, but in particular ADUs in our community. And we are going to discuss, um, most likely in a subcommittee, ultimately through planning and through the city council, whether ADUs are, are a requirement, um, for, for what types of zones, what types of properties, what types of parameters relative to square footage, lot size, all those elements. So the, the simple answer is yes, but with lots of clarification, context and further discussion. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for Vice Mayor Mark. Um, can I ask the clerk, do we have any other, uh, questions for public comment here?
Thank you, Mayor. There, I see no other, no other public comment.
Thank you. All right. So we'll close the public comment and bring this back to council for deliberation. Or actually, before we do that, I wanted to ask, uh, our council, Ann Danforth, if, um, she has any, uh, comments on the process that the city has gone through in developing this draft and preparing it for submission, uh, including, uh, the substantive and timing, uh, aspects of it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the city has received several letters criticizing the timing and the procedure being used to get us, uh, to this evening in consideration of adoption. And I wanted to speak to that, and I wanted to recommend, uh, several additions to the resolution to clarify that point. Since the last housing element cycle, the HCD regulations and the, and the state laws have increased the time and resources required to create a housing element update by orders of magnitude. It is simply a much more complicated, costly and time consuming process than it ever has been before. Additionally, HCD used to offer consultation during the process. They no longer do that, which makes it all the more high stakes that you end up with a compliant document. A, A bag published the draft arena allocations in May of twenty twenty one. They were HCD approved them in January of twenty twenty two, allocating that to Belvedere a hundred and sixty units. At that point, this Belvedere could get to work on its site inventory, but that proved to be a very problematic and time considering process. Because as you all know, Belvedere is largely built out. There are very, very few vacant sites. And initially, at least very few property owners indicated interest in intensifying the development on their property. So it took a long time to get an inventory. Before the consultant could even start work, the legislature added an additional thirty days to the process. We, I can attest personally to the fact that Belvedere staff and the, uh, housing element team of consultants has worked very hard to bring this housing element for you in, in a timely fashion as possible. However, there has been an extensive public comment and interaction process, a number of workshops and meetings. And the consultant team and the city staff have tried very difficult, tried very hard to be responsive. The staff also believed that it was important that the city council, at least in theory, approve the housing element before it went to HCD. As a result, it has not yet gone to HCD. However, we believe that this is a much better document than would otherwise have gotten to HCD and more reflective of Belvedere's true intentions. And so with that, I'd like to add, uh, several new recitals to the draft resolution that is before you. The first three would go after the first, excuse me, the fourth, um, recital on the first page. And I will read them into the record. I've already given a copy to the clerk. The first would be, whereas in addition to the new fair housing requirements, state law and administrative regulations have significantly increased the time and resources, including substantial public input and revisions required for a housing element update, both in terms of substantive content and process. And whereas city staff and the city's consultant team have worked diligently to produce a draft housing element that complies with state law. And whereas despite those diligent efforts, the city was not able to submit a draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development ninety days before the January thirty one deadline, uh, twenty, January thirty one, twenty twenty three deadline for adopting the housing element update. And, and then the last recital that I would add would be a final recital before the now therefore provision, which is on the last page of the, uh, resolution, I would add, whereas the city council understands and acknowledges that it may have to amend the housing element update in the near future to conform to any comments from the State Department of Housing and Community Development and tends to make such amendments on or before May thir-, excuse me, not in tens, expects to make such amendments on or before May thirty first, twenty twenty three. Those would be my recommended additions. I can also, if you like, read into the record the, um, changes that have been discussed so far.
I think, I think we have those, uh, I think in, in council's mind, and they are in the record. So I think we can save you that effort. But thank you very much, Ms. Danforth. I really appreciate the, that help with the overview and the resolutions. And I will just echo, um, what a time consuming and really quite remarkable process this has been. The amount of public input and public comment and the amount of just overall heavy lifting that went into creating this three hundred and seventy page document. It was really quite extraordinary. Um, and the timeline that was allowed for it really just wasn't, um, wasn't, uh, the least bit flexible or accommodating. Uh, and particularly for a city like ours, where the, uh, amount of land to build on is so limited. And, and the burden, the creativity and the burden of trying to meet the arena demand, uh, was so, um, was so robust. So it's kind of remarkable that we got here. And if I'm to understand what I've read in the papers, at least half or maybe more than half of the municipalities in the county are in similar boats, uh, time wise, uh, developer. So, uh, there's a lot of hard work and, uh, to get us here. And, um, uh, I also want to commend, uh, all the groups that, uh, that have worked on that. Let me bring it back to council for discussion. And I don't know, Councilmember Kenneser, you're looking at me like you might want to weigh in.
To start out, um, because, um, mu- much of the, delay in getting this, um, to this point this evening has really been done to the incredible hard work of the committees, the planning commission, the staff and, um, subcommittees working on this to make sure that every opportunity and workshop and commission hearing was public and publicly noticed. I, I would ask that with respect to the one, two, three, four, five, um, starting with the current fifth recital, I think you've added some in above this, but it's the one that whereas the housing element update, uh, started October of twenty one, there, there follows, um, a number of paragraphs reciting the community, um, engagement process. And I just was hoping that in real time tonight, um, we could amend those, um, paragraphs to add the language that we see in the third from the last, uh, recital that, that, um, recites that these meetings, workshops and, and, um, the like were held as duly noticed and advertised public meetings. If it's necessary for Irene to be able to just clarify, um, that the accuracy of that. But, but, um, from my involvement in the process, the period of time, uh, the last, say, four months, during which we might otherwise have submitted an, an inadequate preliminary draft. I feel that, that we as a community really made an extra effort to educate, engage and, um, accommodate the, the views, not just of our residents, but of, um, other interested stakeholders and the, and the state and the community as a whole. So if we could, um, just have, um, that added, um, before the resolution is before us tonight, I'd appreciate it. It's in the paragraphs I described, um, beginning January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, that was our retreat. So that was duly noticed. March fifteenth, April twenty third, both of those are duly noticed and, um, publicly advertised planning commissions.
The next one may not have been.
The next one, we need verification from, um, Irene. That's the May twenty first meeting, Irene. And by Irene, I, I, I mean Ms. Borba, our planning director. And, uh, the council meeting, of course, and planning commission meetings thereafter are duly noticed and publicly advertised. But I think it's important because, um, the timing of our actions tonight are based in, in part on, on this being a public process. And I for one feel that, that we're more likely to be able to, um, ultimately implement this plan if at the outset, meaning now, we really do have a, a public who is engaged in, in not just getting a, a draft technically approved, but one that we feel substantially complies with HCD's requests. But also that we can really take responsibility as a community for, for implementing over the next. for implementing over the next eight years. Thank you, Mayor Lynch.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimmels, sir. And Irene, if you're able to confirm the accuracy of those additions with respect to the notice for each of those meetings, then I think we can just make that part of this record when it comes time to consider a resolution this evening.
I'd be happy to do that.
So I have one more comment. And, and that is that I would really like to thank, following on from my request for the amendments to the resolution, as a part of our actions tonight, I want to thank all the residents who have participated in this public engagement, public education and outreach, whether from attending in person one of these publicly noticed meetings or sending comments to the consultant or sending comments to city councillors. We really, really appreciate it. I also want to especially thank the residents of the Hilaryta who agreed to be interviewed by our consultant and and staff who gave us very good information and data to inform our processes. I also want to thank the housing advocates who have submitted letters. I have respect, great respect for the housing advocates in the state and Bay Area. And we hear what they're saying. But I believe that they can advance their, their missions from the different organizations and their impact, short of litigation. And I would like to take this opportunity to invite those interested parties to meet with members of the city council. I would certainly invite them to meet with me and possibly the mayor, if he would be so inclined, and to really see where we can find common ground on actually following through on the intentions of the litigation that through this exhaustive process, we are trying to comply with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimmels, sir. And I'll just say that I'm more than happy to join any meeting we're able to arrange. So thank you for proposing it. At this time, it seems like we should, we'll bring this back to council for discussion. We should, I think, talk about any questions that folks have that are, that might be debated so that we can work out any revisions that might be open questions. I have only two. I don't know how many other folks have, but Councilmember Cooper, do you want to start with you?
Okay, thanks. Well, going back to the letter we received this evening from lawyer Mark Wolf representing a local organization here in Belvidere made up of citizens referred to as Belvidere Residents for Intelligent Growth. One of the issues they raised was actually about the one Mallard Road or including San Rafael Avenue, Site 04B on page D15.
Yes.
And I, I was able to spend a little time looking up in our general plan. And actually, net, our net acre is defined as Mr. Wolf noted on pages 19 and 40 in the general plan. And it does mention that the net acreage is actually buildable land and not simply land that is not underwater. So that would also, it actually also lists sidewalks and streets as not being, as being gross acreage. So that net acreage should be simply actual buildable land.
Okay, thank you. Well, you just took away one of my comments because that was the one that I had. I'm down to one now.
You better jump in faster.
Well, I, so I read that letter as well. I did some digging. I came to the same conclusion that you did. And I would propose that this is, this is actually applies to both D14 and D15 because the same general plan references there.
And D17.
Thank you, and D17. So I would propose that we make these revisions to each of those. But basically where we'd say the general plan and the addition would be includes a clear definition of quote net acreage, close quote, as including quote, only the size of the actual developable, developable parcels themselves, period.
Makes sense.
So does anyone have a comment or objection to that? Are we in agreement on that?
Well, Andy also, Andy, make sure you should get it too.
Is there any way we could capture that in real time?
So Andy, we're talking about site 04A, 04B, and 04D. And each of those under the size category, Mayor Lynch can perhaps read it again, following general plan, change that text.
Yeah, so the phrase would be, and on 14, it's a little bit different than on 15 and 16, but the phrase we want, Andy, is one that says the general plan includes a definition of quote net acreage, close quote, as including quote, only the size of the actual developable parcels themselves, period, close quote.
Close quote. So do you want me to grab the language directly from the general plan?
That's the way it would read, yeah.
Okay.
And so that on D14, you could insert after a general plan, you could just begin with includes. And then on D15, where it says, though this acreage is gross, the general plan, and then you could just insert it there again. Includes a clear, includes a definition. And then on 17, again, you see the language, the general plan. So you'd strike everything out after plan and insert the new language. Does that make sense?
Yes, and that's for, for A, for B, and for D, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper Wells.
I, I also wanted to echo Nancy and say that while the city council is maybe at the end of this very long process, I also wanted to thank our, our staff, our consultant, and especially the planning commission and all our citizens that took time to give us their thoughts and really help Belvidere wind up with a realistic and well-intentioned draft that I think we should be proud of and that I believe we can really stand behind and believe that this is doable, possible, and that altogether, our community really stood up to grapple with this issue and, and really embrace it. So I just want to thank everyone also.
Thank you. Councilmember Kimmels.
No more, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark.
Yes, I have no more comments or questions or debate over the issues. I'll, I'll, I'll second what both Councilmember Kimmels and Councilmember Cooper have said. Having gone through this with Councilmember Cooper on this the last couple of weeks in detail, we went through, you know, packets of public comment, planning commissioner comment, comments at the planning commission, numbers of meetings. The comments from this council themselves worked on narrative, you know, the sensitivity to existing density, you know, constraints to development. There was a lot of efforts. And I'd like to say a couple of quick things. Thank you to everyone involved, certainly. We really do understand the state's goal here. And we really tried to keep that in mind as we worked on this plan. We want to see it happen. We want to see this city play its parts in developing new housing. We want and worked aggressively to incorporate the comments that we received. And we wanted to stay as consistent as possible to the fabric of this community while achieving the goals I mentioned before. And I think I would like to thank Irene, Andy. You really helped us do that. So I wanted to thank you quite significantly. And it was a big effort. And the planning staff, we have a couple of members here tonight. Thank you very much for herding the cats to get it to this point for us to try to, you know, tie a bow on it. But that was much of the heavy lifting. So I do applaud that effort and thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mark. I had one more question for this group. I think we had, I know we talked about this at our January 9 meeting, and this is in the Fair Housing Assessment Appendix A. It's page A9. And there was some discussion about some of the boxes or graphics and about the conclusions that were included in there. And there were a number of edits, and I agree with all those. But at the top of A9, in the box labeled fair housing issue, it says, Belvidere has significantly lower portions of racial and ethnic minorities. And it goes on from there. And then the next sentence says, the absence of protected classes and housing options suitable to them may indicate exclusionary behavior. And I know that that was something that we had talked about. I had identified it as something that I thought was not supported in the document. And I wanted to ask, is it still in here because that was a considered judgment? Or is this something that maybe got missed?
No, I, I'm hesitating because I would like it not to be there because I felt it was a an inference that didn't follow completely logically. But, Andy, I'll let you discuss this. I believe, without putting words in your mouth, although I am at the same time, I think it's identified a specific protected class that doesn't exist here. And it's similar to the comment before that there's been quite a number of studies and experiences which, which Andy has pointed out and referenced that housing policy experience does indicate that when these exclusionary behaviors happen, it's a result of, or I should say, when you, when these absence of these classes does imply that exclusionary behavior. And it's experienced, and that's how we tried to get it in the question before that.
Yeah. And that's fine. I appreciate that. I, Vice Mayor Mark, that's a terrific explanation. We debated this on January 9, and there were differing opinions. And so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight. If that was a considered judgment, and you know, you stand behind that, I'm fine with leaving it in. But I just wanted to raise it and see if my fellow council members had any different views.
Yeah.
I'm not hearing any. All right, so I'm fine with that.
It was, it was, one more quick comment. It was, it was an attempt to, to put on a hat who was reading this document and, and who are submitting it to. And that we're trying to be as understanding of the state's goals as we possibly can be.
Understood, understood. And I totally appreciate that explanation.
Mayor Lynch, I, you know, I realize that we had other properties in, that also have water involved. And I wonder, Andy, can you just carefully go through? And if we're going to add the net acreage definition, maybe we need to add it, I think, Site 2B. I don't know if we listed that one in our list, Peter, did we? So 2B, it actually, it's in there and it says requires.
Yeah.
Did we catch that?
No, we didn't. 2B needs to be added, you're right.
So 2B needs to be there. And then 3A. And then we, we got 4A. Did we get 4A? 4B. And then I think the last, oh, 4D we got. But then there was the lot on Edgewater Road, which is toward the back, that number is it, 9, oh, no. Yeah, 9A. I'm not, it, it actually doesn't even say anything about water there, but it would be appropriate because it is a lagoon property and all lagoon properties have that issue.
Andy.
That doesn't have, but, but that one doesn't have a, that's, that's two units irrespective of size. Right, size is not a factor there.
Not a factor.
Yeah. Because that's a single-family home and an ADU.
Oh, right, okay, right.
Andy, did you catch those sites?
I did catch them, and I have a request. Is it possible to consider this as a footnote? My concern is that it might read as a distraction for the HCD reviewer. It, to be at the same font and weight as the description of the property, I think it begins to overpower the suggestion of the site with the constraints that are part of this, this net.
I think we're all fine with that. That's a very good suggestion. Thank you.
So you would say, for example, on 4A, 0.52 acres, period, or and, and then you would put a footnote there, the general plan, and then the language Mayor Lynch suggested.
We could even just leave the language as it is. But where we, where we denote the general plan and the net acre, that's where we could have the footnote marking and then.
I wouldn't leave what you have in there now because it's inaccurate.
Okay.
So, so, I mean, I would just, you just have size and the acreage and all the other ones. So make that consistent, but on the ones where this applies, you just put a footnote on it and designate it as such.
Thank you, will do.
Okay.
It works, works for me. All right. Excellent. Well, I think we're to the point where we can consider a resolution. We've got the resolution that was circulated today or yesterday. I think it's a revised resolution. It has been revised further during the course of this discussion. Those revisions and additions are in the record. And I'll entertain a motion.
I've taken some notes. I'm prepared to make a motion, but if any other council member wants to amend it, so.
Can I pause you? I don't think we need to, we don't need to recite all the revisions because I think there are, part of what we discussed. I can tell by your face you feel differently.
We defer to counsel on this. I, I think some of our discussion was, let's do this, let's not do this. So I just want to make sure that we, we're voting on the same document. But I'm open to suggestion.
Terrific.
I could give it a shot, and if I get filed up, then we'll default to your suggestion of generality. And I could also identify some and simply make the motion that if there are any other specific ones I've missed that are in the record, that they would be part, part and parcel of the motion. Just with regard to the resolution, because the motion is to adopt a resolution. And by the way, I had thought about making two different motions, but convinced by the comments of Councilmember Mark and, and staff that, that the, that the motion is most appropriate to adopt both the housing element and the climate action plan. Not climate action, safety element. I've been working on too many of these. Not climate action, safety element. I've been working on too many of these. So sorry. So the motion is to adopt, as set forth in the staff report, the housing element update, Exhibit A, entitled Six-Cycle Housing Element Update 2023-2031, and Exhibit B, entitled "The City of Belvidere's Safety Element," entitled "Environmental Hazard Safety and Sustainability Element 2023 to 2031." And the motion is to adopt the resolution as amended and discussed for amendment in, as the minutes will reflect. The specific real-time amendments that I made note of, that have been adopted, are proposed by Peter Mark at 3.10. And we watched, I think we watched that being done. 3.14 also in real time, Andy. The hazard map, we kept the slope stability language the same, but corrected the typo. West Shore Road should be, should replace West Side Drive or whatever it was. I think it's on page 1.30. We adopted, we made the typo by right at page 4.4. We changed Amendment Exhibit D, Mallard, to consistently read 48. We deleted the list of employment categories as suggested by Councilmember Cooper at H3.6. And we agreed to correct the net acreage language to be consistent with the general plan. And I'm not sure my, and to do that by footnote, did we? By footnote? We agreed to change that by dropping a footnote with respect to each of the identified sites. I don't know if anyone has a list of that. And in addition, in the resolution, in the addition to, in addition to the inserted language provided by council to the clerk tonight, we increased the recitals to include more of the process as written into the record tonight. And we changed the word, we, in fourth recital from the bottom, we removed lower income, such that line two will read, "to accommodate the arena." And we changed the word discontinued in the next line to say, "available for redevelopment." And an additional paragraph will be added by council, I believe has been provided to the clerk, acknowledging that our action taken tonight anticipates that we will continue to engage in the process with HCD as our mutual intention is to fully comply with the statutes. That's all I have. Did I miss anything?
I don't think you did. That was comprehensive, and thank you for making the motion and for all the detailed notes. Is there a second?
I can second that. Thank you.
And can we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Kebitser?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Mayor Lynch?
Yes.
The ayes have it, and the motion passes with a vote of 4-0, with Councilmember Wilkinson absent.
Thank you. Before we get to the open forum, I just wanted to pause and acknowledge all the hard work and the very well-said words of thanks by my fellow council members for everyone involved in this. And especially want to call out Councilmember Cooper and Vice Mayor Mark, who did just an astonishing amount of work from January 9 until tonight, just taking a document that was capable of being significantly improved and just worked, from what I can tell, probably around the clock. I was stunned when I got this version. I was just shocked at how much work went into it. It's all very detailed. It's complex. And so thank you both very much. All right. Next agenda item is the open forum.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is a special meeting, so there actually is no open forum. You've already called for comments on the item that was on the agenda. So you have exhausted your Brown Act responsibilities.
Okay, it is on the agenda, though.
It is. Shouldn't have been. Okay. By all means.
Yeah, I didn't want to skip it. I had the same reaction, but it is on the agenda, and I didn't want to skip it. So is there anyone here who would like to address any items that are not on tonight's agenda? I don't see anyone here in the room. Can I ask the clerk if we have anyone participating online who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking over at the attendees, with 10 attendees, I see no raised hands.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work, and we are adjourned.
Andy, thank you so much. Before you go.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Irene as well. Thank you so much.